In the room with Vice Chair Commissioner DePisafy, Commissioners Pam Treese and Jerry Willie. And joining us virtually is Commissioner Roy Rogers. So you have all five of us. Our first topic is a proposal to sell Fire Station sixty-two at Blanton Campus. Walton Valley Fire and Rescue, welcome and please take your way.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Greg Wyman. I'm the Real Estate and Planning Program Manager under the Facilities Division, under Facilities Fleet and Parks Department, and I'm joined here today with Laurel Brown, our Division Manager. Department Manager, excuse me. Getting used to all those new terms. As you recall, on February sixth, work session, we presented to your board a proposal from Walton Valley Fire and Rescue to purchase a portion of the Blanton Campus, no one as Fire Station sixty-two. The, just some recap of the history on this, this project is the Blanton Campus was purchased in two thousand eighteen for eight million five hundred fifty thousand for a new Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency through General Obligation Bond Series and Facilities Capital Fund. The design team identified an alternative location preferred by WACA. And then the campus was utilized for other purposes, including swing space for the seismic retrofit of the Public Services Building here, as well as some other tenant uses and swing space.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Certainly.
The purchase with the capital, the General Obligation Bond Series twenty sixteen, was that related to levy funding? Or, or, excuse me, the bond that was issued for the radios, WACA and whatnot?
Yes, and that was for six million, eight, six million five hundred fifty thousand and two million came out of the Facilities Capital Fund.
Okay, so that general obligation bond was related to that measure?
Correct.
Thank you.
This is just a campus map of Blanton showing what the three parcels that we own, including what is there presently, which is the fire station, there's a facilities building, an apparatus building, a tower, administration building, storage and a gravel lot. Presently, we have some income generating leases on the property. One is with Walton Valley Fire and Rescue at seventeen thousand one hundred seven dollars a month and revenue. And then we have a space that used to be the apparatus building, and that is leased to American Medical Response for nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars a month for a total of thirty-six thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars monthly revenue generated on the site.
And how long are they, do they have a timeframe by which they're planning a different site?
The Walton, the Walton Valley Fire and Rescue was a one-year lease with an option to extend to get us through this presentation, as well as any purchase-sale agreement if the decision is to move forward with selling them the station. That lease is terminatable by either party, as well as the American Medical Response was an initial three-year lease. They are in their second year of that. They have an option to extend that also. Prior board action during, as I mentioned, the February sixth, twenty twenty-four work session, the staff sought the board's county commissioner's guidance on a proposal to sell a portion of the Blanton Station to Walton Valley Fire and Rescue. Your board provided direction to obtain an appraisal for the entire seven point two-five acres known as the Blanton Campus with a breakout value for Station sixty-two itself. Today, our purpose and is to gain board's direction, update you on the appraisal results for Station sixty-two, and again, obtain your direction on the following options. One would be sell Station sixty-two to Walton Valley Fire and Rescue and retain the remainder of the campus. Another option would be to explore the potential to market for sale the entire seven point two-five acres of the Blanton Campus, and then the third option would be retain the entire seven point two-five acre Blanton Campus for county's use. And certainly, that's not the only options here. We are, we're open to other suggestions or recommendations to the board.
I'm having a little trouble keeping up. If I go back to slide three, when you refer to there's seven point two-five acres and there's Station sixty-two, oh, we have to go back to slide three. There you go.
Okay.
So I'm assuming the yellow box is Station sixty-two. But see how there's also a facility building? I'm assuming that that whole red rectangle is the seven point two-five acres.
The seven point two-five acres is a combination of the three tax lots that are shown there in the red boxes. Tax Lot three oh two, three, two hundred and one oh one. And that comprises the whole seven point two-five acres. The proposal to sell the fire station would be just the yellow building and a portion of some land surrounding that that would be delineated as part of this sale and would be a tax lot segregation of that, Tax Lot three oh two.
Got it. Okay, got it. So I was trying to make sure in terms of all of these options, what we were referencing. Okay.
All right. Let's see, we left off with.
Slide seven, thinking?
Yeah. So the appraisal that was dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and also has been provided to Walton Valley Fire and Rescue for their consideration, was conducted using a sales approach comparison. And Station sixty-two is valued at two million eight hundred twenty thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars, with the entire seven point two-five assemblage valued at nine million seven hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred forty-two dollars.
I'm lost, I'm lost.
Sorry.
That one.
There we, sorry.
Wait, wait, are you there? You're there. Okay, got it.
And then the nine million seven hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred forty-two is broken down through the three tax lots and the actual buildings that are on those tax lots is the way the appraiser did this to come up with a total value.
And the, the final campus total amount is the eight point five five zero that we spent? Slide one, the total.
That's what we purchased the campus for, and it is now worth nine million seven hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred forty-two. So there has been some inflation on that, not a great amount, but there is, there is some value to that.
One, one million two hundred and six dollars, one hundred, one million two hundred and six thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. And Greg, I like this table, the breakdown of what each law, building value is. Do you have a comparison when we purchased the building or?
We do not. There were some appraisals done, but it just gave a bulk sum of what the building was worth, and it appraised the, the entire campus at that point, not by building, but it valued it at the eight million five hundred fifty thousand that the county purchased it.
Thank you. And the facilities building is vacant. And while TBFNR currently only needs Fire Station sixty-two, we could offer up the whole tax lot for sale.
That is an option that we could look at, offering the entire tax lot rather than doing a tax lot segregation. As part of the deal, when TBFNR approached us about this sale, is they were willing to, to fund any tax lot segregation that would be required, and that would be a cost of approximately twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Are they just as willing to buy the whole tax lot without the partitioning and take the facility?
That is a question that we can pose to them. We don't have that information at this point. We, again, provided them the appraisal. They are digesting it and comparing it to a site that they already have on Pheasant Lane and determining what would be in their best interest. So the required actions to complete the sale of Station sixty-two, as I started to reference, are a tax lot partition for Station sixty-two if we sold them just a portion of that tax lot, or certainly could be a, the whole tax lot or something greater or less than. Easement for the county for ingress and egress off two hundred and ninth, because there is an access point there that is key to the county for any future development that it may choose to do. And we would want to preserve that two hundred and ninth access and have a shared access so that they, we could access off of two hundred and ninth and not just off of the access points on Blanton. And currently, there are three access points on Blanton, but that would leave no access off of two hundred and ninth. Consider long-term planning for the property and negotiate and execute a purchase and sale agreement with Walton Valley Fire and Rescue should this board's direction be to move forward and should TBFNR choose to move forward with that purchase.
Greg, the, the estimated cost of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, is that a cost to the county? Or is that something that the TBFNR offered?
TBFNR has agreed that they will pay that cost on any tax lot segregation. They also paid for the cost of this appraisal as part of the consideration for the board's approval to sell a portion of that off, so. And that was a cost that was a risk to them.
Are they willing to provide for the easement as well?
Yes, they are aware of the need for that easement, and they would be willing to sit down and negotiate that, including any maintenance costs that would be split for future of that easement and any asphalt replacement or any curb guttering that would need to be repaired in the future. Allocation of the proceeds, so this is just a recap of what we had talked about at the February sixth session, and that is that the tax lot, the bond requires that we would pay within two years of receiving any proceeds, either pay down the bond or invest that back to some capital costs listed in the ballot and which includes some of the items that are listed below. Value of the remaining Blanton Campus. This is some key information here where we maintain external revenue streams generated from lease spaces here. And again, we talked about this earlier, AMR currently has a lease through the twenty, August thirty-one, twenty twenty-six to use the apparatus building, and it generates two hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars annually. The potential for future leases on other spaces of the campus is there. We have not really explored that, but I believe there would be other users, either internal or external partners. Accommodates the current use as flex and overflow space. As pointed out earlier, we had a portion of the administrative building used as retrofitting space back early on when we purchased it. We are also using a portion of that now for inclement weather sheltering or heat-related or freeze-related events or smoke-related events, and we've set up an agreement between housing and facilities for that. Functioning as a drop-in workspace for the Sheriff's Office deputies, serving as temporary swing space for patrol admin displaced by our Law Enforcement Center courtroom projects, occasional use for training by Sheriff's Office and transitioning vacated gravel lot for the, it's a miss.
Yeah.
Not the house, it is the pallet house, and we are working with housing right now on an agreement, an interdepartmental agreement for them to store the houses that are currently in use over on, off of Seventeenth Street in Hillsborough to be placed on that gravel lot for future use. It allows us time for strategic facilities planning while supporting eminent space needs, potential swing space during capital projects, the jail expansion, provides space for growth for county departments and reduces dependence on leased property for county services and delivery.
I have a question. Has the Sheriff's Office been involved in this planning as well? I'm just curious. I've heard some feedback about Blanton and their use of it and not concern about it being sold.
We have partnered with them certainly on the other uses such as the leases that are in place out there and the temporary inclement weather sheltering. We have not made this a focus with the Sheriff's Office that there is a potential to sell off a portion because it would not affect the area that they're presently using.
They're not using any of Station sixty-two?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just so that it's part of the record, when Blanton was purchased, there was, there was a vision that this would be used for public safety facilities at a point in time. I am using the word vision very specifically because there was no master plan, no financing strategy. So part of potentially what you heard from the Sheriff's Office is frustration that several years ago when this property was purchased, that they were told this would be a vision and that this could be an expansion for public safety sites. So I'm lifting this up as we continue to refine and step into capital improvement, planning processes, master planning processes. It's really important that we accommodate those with financing strategies. So I really want to compliment Laurel and Greg for, and Erin Calvert for their collaborative conversations with the Sheriff's Office because this can be really hard information for sometimes departments to hear when they may have thought it's been plans. But we can no longer just have visions or plans. We need to have the financing correspondence to execute on those plans.
And I certainly support that. I just want to make sure that I understand what's going on. And thank you for the grounding us on financial responsibilities that we have when we, when we're.
Okay, so again, our purpose here today is to obtain direction from your board on the potential next steps. And kind of recapping that again, options would be not exclusive, but obtain board direct to sell just Station sixty-two, market the, for sale the entire seven point two-five acre campus, or retain the entire campus for county's portfolio. We will, again, review the appraisal with both parties. We've looked at it internally. We support what the appraisal provides. And right now, TBFNR is doing that same thing internally, and we'll be going to their board to give their direction on whether or not they want to pursue the purchase of this. If that is, comes to fruition and this board chooses to go that direction, we would bring back consent agenda item for your board to authorize us to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with TBFNR. We would negotiate and execute that sale, purchase sale agreement and easements with TBFNR. And then the other option again is explore the sale of the entire Blanton Campus. The next steps for that would be consulting brokers and researching current market conditions, identifying alternative locations for functions currently supported by Blanton.
I have one technical question that isn't, doesn't need to be answered in order for me to make a directional decision for TV. And that is, has there been any brownfield assessment done on the full campus?
So there were some limited environmental reports when we purchased the property back in two thousand eighteen, and no contamination was known or present at that time. I think that as part of the due diligence of any buyer, if the campus was sold as an entire package, they would want to redo evaluations and environmental reports. There may be some small localized spills, particularly in the fleet apparatus building that was repair of, of many of the large fire trucks over a course of time that we may not be aware of.
Because we originally purchased the whole property from TBFNR. So they may have more knowledge than we have about the full property, and they may be selecting one of it and then feel like they've gotten the limited part that they want, whereas somebody else now.
And I would defer to county council about the liability of that because I believe there is some protection that we may or may not have through that.
I think, Greg, what you're talking about is when we come into property involuntarily, we do have different obligations related to cleanup and contamination that we did when we acquire a property, which this one we did acquire. I am happy to go back to Chair Harrington and look at our original purchase and sales agreement with Walton Valley Fire and Rescue and see how we dealt with that at that time. The other thing that I was thinking was where are, I mean, I'm not, we, we can also do a little bit more, look back where we did that testing in relation to where we know there's a gas function, a gasoline function versus other parts of the property and bring that information back to your board. So we might have a little more assurance.
And presently, the TBFNR parcel that they are looking to buy has a fuel station on it that is on their parcels. And it is a parking area for their large trucks that potentially have leakage of, of fluids.
I'll hold the rest of my comments until it's my turn. In terms of questions and comments, why don't we start with Commissioner Rogers since he has his hand raised?
Okay, thank you. I'll try not to hack at you or sneeze as I ask this. One of the essential services in any area obviously is fire, just like it is sewer and water. And so it's important as this area grows, I think, to have this particular location from what I've seen from the maps. But I'm a little bit confused about Walton Valley going back to their board and making a determination. And at the same time, we're talking about marketing the entire site. So I'm not certain what the timelines are here. It would seem to me that they would need to give some pretty clear and decisive direction very shortly, or we would potentially market the entire site. So is there some, Laurel, I don't know who was answering this, but what is the timeline in this? I mean, we're kind of in a limbo to find out what they want to do, and that seems like there ought to be a little more hurried to their action.
I'll field that question, Commissioner Rogers. So TBFNR was provided the appraisal. Chief Weiss has responded to us and said that they are presently looking at it. They expect to get back to us fairly shortly, and we can certainly set a deadline for them and say we need an answer at this point, or we will look at alternatives.
But they approached us.
Correct.
To purchase the station out of the whole site. That's why this whole topic was kicked off of looking at potentially selling the station to them, and our staff has done the due diligence for us to make sure that our eyes are wide open, that we could choose to offer up just the station or some version thereof. We could choose instead to put the whole site up, or we could also choose to retain the whole site or a portion of the site. So there are, there are many options available to us. The key question is, since TBFNR has asked us to consider selling just the station to them, do we want to do that? And your hand is back up, so go ahead.
Oh, yeah, just to follow up, I, I understood that part, but I, I agree with the CEO's assessment that when this was purchased a few years back, I mean, there was thoughts that it might be a much larger complex, and that was before we had, you know, Sheriff's Training Facility as it is today and WACA is doing different things. So I, I can see where there's a need to either put it on the market or, or separate it out. And so I, I agree with Chair's comments that, that this has been initiated by them, but I, I think there should be a time certain, and if they want to buy, fine. And I, I, for one, would be inclined to look at that favorably, but if they can't give us some direct answer, we ought to look at the alternative, seeing what the market is. So that's my comment.
Anyone else? Questions or feedback? Go for it.
So this is more of a legal question. I'm puzzled as to why we bonded the amount of money that we did, and, and we took two million dollars out of our capital fund. But now that we're potentially getting some of that money back, it tells us that we have to spend the money. Is this, they can be spent, or we have to spend it on converting existing nine-one-one, county what, radio coverage, blah, 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 that stuff? Or pay down the bond? So is that our only two options?
Commissioner Willie, those are the two bonds, or those are our two options that allow us to avoid tax restrictions, you know, additional taxing on those bond funds. I suppose there probably are other options, but this is what keeps the, those funds, those bonds without additional tax penalties. And I am not a bond expert, but I can certainly engage with bond counsel, and we did as we were going into this process. And to stay within the bounds of, of the bond, this was, were, these are our options.
So it's not like using your house as collateral. You have to have X amount of percentage of equity. So that doesn't work this way. I guess where I'm going with this is I, I'm, I'm thinking we should, if we sell parts to TBFNR for the two point eight million, that we put two million dollars back in our capital fund. And then if you want to put eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars against the bond, okay, that's fine. But our capital fund could certainly use replenishment, and two million dollars would help with that. That's my guess.
Does that work within the bonds?
Well, and so I, I, I need to know what exactly we're talking about, the penalty side, not putting it back in the bond.
And I appreciate that, and I just looked back at the email from bond counsel, and it actually, the tax, it would remove the tax restrictions from the originally purchased property. Then we would be paying taxes on the property we built with, or we bought with the bond funds.
But I understand.
Oh, you're talking about property taxes here.
Point.
Not, not property taxes. We don't pay property taxes on county-owned property. It's the taxes on the bond funds related to that property. I can get you clearer answers.
So if I, if I would suggest if staff can go and further explore any of your questions with bond, bond counsel and then get back to you, because we have time on what the use of the proceeds would be. What we're really discussing here is the disposition of the land. I will just share that I had asked the question when we were originally going potentially down this path. We've been using the proceeds to offset our existing capital improvements that are underway in our critical facilities, because those are public safety-like. So we'll get clarification on bond counsel on what questions we've asked and follow up with your board.
I guess where I was going with that is I'd, I'd like to have more options here. I, when I first read this, I thought these are our only two options. Those are not very good. I don't want to do that. So yeah, I'd like to have other options of, yeah, what, what are the taxes that we would have to pay? And, and what, what's the criteria of the bond? I mean, we're paying down, how much is our bond payments and how long is it?
Yeah, and we'll have to get those answers financially, and we can work with bond counsel. I, I do want to just emphasize Ms. Angie's point that we can use proceeds to expand nine-one-one dispatch center and expand or add other county emergency response facilities.
But it does have to be emergency response facilities.
Right, just places, capital, right? You displace it? Capital funds that we have, displace capital funds, on slide two.
Yeah, we took two million dollars out of our capital fund, and now we have restrictions on being able to replenish it by a sale.
Let's work with bond counsel because how we use bond proceeds and reset, we, we want to be very thoughtful in bringing this information back to your board.
Eyes wide open, I want, that's what I want to do.
And I understand your question, and I can't recall if we asked that specific question, but we will follow up.
Okay, because other than that, I would, I think we should move ahead with selling this to TBFNR, retaining the rest of it for inventory, as Roy has pointed out. Looking into the future, it's always good to already have assets rather than be out in the market and paying for both, for what we have to do. So that's where I was going a little bit. I was more looked at, looking at the use of that.
My, my only question, if you're looking at the option between selling just Station sixty-two and retaining the property or selling the whole property, is what's the downside of selling Station sixty-two? How much does that diminish the overall package? You know, is it, that would be my only question.
You're saying, so if we sell that piece, do we, is that now not? Are you saying, so if we sell that piece, do we, is it now not worth the residual?
Exactly. That would be, that would be my question.
And I think the answer to that would be is if it's, you know, it does take away from that total value if you, you sell off a portion of that, but you are retaining the larger portion of it. So you would probably still have
Still marketable.
It's still marketable and we would retain the access off of 209, which is key for any development of that property that you'd want access off of both those major streets.
I would also offer a commission trace that the station is a pretty unique use. You know, not very many users of a fire station, that configuration of ability. What we retain are the more sort of flexible spaces.
Okay.
Great. I'm, thank you for your presentation. I'm in support of selling the Station 62 to the TVFNR. And I really appreciate the question that Willie asked. I didn't think about the capital down payment. I was like, okay, I guess this is where we're stuck. But he asked, what other options really exist? And so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I definitely don't want to lose the ability to get the $2 million back or a portion thereof. With regard to the station, the key for us, I want to make sure that the easement isn't just granted to Washington County, but that that easement is, goes with the property, the land property. I'm just as open if they want the facilities building part two at this tax lot value estimate. I don't see any reason why we can't just let go of, of that whole tax lot with the provision of the the easement. Because that's one less building we need to worry about maintaining and whatnot and avoids the tax lot partitioning.
And I would almost agree with that, with one exception to that's what Courtney said, that is this building really kind of a special use building? And if it really does have a fairly small market attraction, then I would say, yeah. If it isn't that way, I'd maybe want
I'm assuming that since they owned the station previously, that there was a reason why they installed that facilities building and
Oh, it is a warehouse space that's directly across from them that's labeled the facilities building. It has some large bay doors and it's mostly a warehousing space. And we could certainly go back to them and ask them if there's a appetite to garner more property and take that entire tax lot rather than the segregation. And to your question, Chair Harrington, yes, the easements or covenants that run with the land. So they would be transferable to anybody that purchased it. And that is a key value of that future of selling that property.
I'm just, I'm crossing the t's since it says for county.
That is true, but we have Courtney here that will make sure that we have covenants that run with the land.
Yep, yep. As, as well as I want to mention Amens in the room, and he's been helping recently. Amen with this, with this work is as we're all spread out on different estimates lately.
Great, great. And yeah, that $2 million bothered me when we went over it. Every single time we've gone over it.
Yeah.
And that bond measure was from 2060. So I think that next time in the recap, I'd like to see that called out. Yeah. And I don't, frankly, I don't remember a date by which the board decided to purchase the property that the training center is currently. That would be good to do. Probably buried in the facilities condition index preliminary results that I haven't gone back to since May. But I appreciate all of the work that the facilities team has been doing for that and the CIP and continuing to advance us and practices around master planning. It's a big amount of work you're doing.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, before we close out, just to acknowledge one piece. As part of the original purchase of, of this property, there was free lease granted to TVFNR. I want to give a shout out to TVFNR as well as specifically Greg for negotiating. TVFNR paying a market lease this year and recognizing that the county does need to recoup those costs. TVFNR could have taken a very different position as we've been working through this. So I just publicly want to express appreciation both to our team and the partnership that we have with Chief Weiss and his team.
Yep. That's why I think looking at that whole rectangle with the facilities building is why, if they're interested, I think it should be talked about.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate the board's time.
Thank you. All righty then. We're on to board and leadership communication and formal agenda item discussion. Why don't we check in on the formal agenda first so that that would give our staff maximum information? What did I do? Oh, it's right here. For tonight's meeting, we have the nine items on the consent agenda. One public hearing and one action item. Currently, we have eight people signed up for the first public communication period, which would take us over 16 minutes, probably closer to 20 with transitions. And we have three, five for the end of the meeting, which is 25 minutes. Board, would you like us to let the full set of people go since we don't have a lot on the agenda for the first session? That's one option. Another option is let five people speak at the beginning and then those who are of the eight that can't be accommodated in that 10 minutes, they would go first up in the second section. And then we will go from there for the 30 minutes max. Or altogether different. What's your pleasure? Yeah.
Are, are the, is the testimony varied?
I don't know that they're required to identify topic, are they?
They, they are not. We give them the option to provide. So 85% of the people signed up are election-related and then 15% on other topics.
Which one is Dale? Either 15?
The, the second option worked for, for letting, letting, actually either option I'm okay with. You can let all eight of them speak at once. And go with the next five. I'm okay with other options.
There's, there's also Commissioner Rogers.
Oh, yeah.
So we have two, at least two. We have at least two options that have been shared. What would you like to do?
So let me make sure I heard you correctly. We have eight people signed up for the two-minute slot?
Yep.
And then we have how many people for the five-minute slot?
We have five currently. So that, that eight is just people who let us know in advance. That doesn't, who else may come tonight.
Similarly with the five-minute. Yeah, right. People who can show up in the room, there are also people on Zoom.
Well, I guess I don't want to cut the eight and two minutes off at, at five, sliding the other three into a five-minute time slot. So if we can say, okay, the three carryover gets two minutes at the end and everybody else gets five minutes, then okay. But if everybody gets five minutes, then I say, let's do the eight all up front for two minutes. So can we limit them at the end to two minutes because it's a carryover or does everybody get five?
So that is at the direction of your presiding officer with the discussion of the full board.
So what would be your preference?
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really don't really have a preference other than a couple of comments. One, I do think we need to hear from all those who are from the election area. But I, I hope, can I? I hope somebody asked them specifically what they're asking for. I'm, I'm not sure that we have a distinct message. If they're just testifying, okay. But I think they're asking for something, but I haven't yet heard what those are. So my preference, I'm going to sit here through the whole thing, whatever you guys decide. But we've never, in my time here, have ever allowed people to take and say, okay, I'll take my two minutes to the end. It's five minutes. Everybody gets five at the end. So they either take the two up front. So I, I would be inclined to give them the two minutes up front, keep it to the two minutes and take the five at the end. If it's a different topic. Remember, it's got to be different topics.
So my preference would be, now, there may be more than eight, right? There's additional people in the room as well as, or at least on Zoom, right? When people sign up in advance, we don't know if they're going to be in the room or on Zoom, okay? But we have eight people who have made the effort to sign up in advance. And I think we should allow for eight people who've signed up in advance and check for, in the room and check for Zoom. And all those folks can get two minutes. And then the five people who have signed up in advance for the five minutes in the, at the end, go from there. And our usual procedures. I think if, if on the five minutes, we have the cards in the back of the room. So after we go through the five or however many who've turned cards in, we should check on Zoom first. And then if there's any additional time, check in the room.
But I just ask a clarifying question here. Am I making this up or do I remember that five minutes was for a person who represented a group?
No, it's five minutes or it used to be 10 for a person who represented a group.
Okay, okay. And I don't remember if in your testimony guide, if it still calls out a group or not.
It does. In the rules of procedure, it gives up to 12 minutes per county-recognized group. That is the clarification.
Yeah, I just, I, I remembered that, but I wasn't sure. And I, I will support Chair Harrington's approach here, comfortable with that.
And Roy, just to your point, I, I would like to have clarification of what they think Washington County can do versus what we have to go to the state to do. Because they've kind of bundled it all together right now. And there are certainly very narrow things that we as a county could do if we were so inclined.
You're referring to the elections, folks.
Correct, yeah. With his, his comment about he'd like to know, he'd like to ask to ask him, ask them what, what do they want?
Well, I took his comment in terms of instead of making it optional, what people are here to talk about, make it acquired. And we could do that, but that's a change in procedure and doing it tonight. I don't know if that's the right way to introduce that requirement.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a comment to that, Commissioner Roy is getting at the point. I, it's, seems a little bit confusing as to what's being asked of, of us. And we have very limited parameters, as he's suggesting. And so teasing it out, just saying, well, what are you asking of us specifically so that there's some direction? I mean, we can't require them to, but I would certainly like to hear it other than saying we're not listening. Because if we're listening, I'm just not hearing what the question is, our questions.
Are the commissioners in the room, are you confused over what we're talking about?
No, it isn't. I don't think it's a confusion. I think what Roy is asking is for them to be able to see what the differential is because it's like they're bringing us all of this data and expecting us to be able to say, yep, you know, we agree with it. We need to make some changes. And we go about making changes when there's very little change that we could actually do. And do they know the difference?
Well, so you're allowed to come and speak to us during public comment about any topic they want. They could come and talk to us about blue sky weather. They could come and talk to us about Idaho state law for two minutes. Doesn't matter what the topic is. So the fact that there are one or more people who may be talking about election business that the county doesn't have any control over, to me, it yeah, it's, it just is. So I don't differentiate it. I don't differentiate what they're saying from topic to topic.
I thought it was pretty clear what they were asking for. They were asking for a work session and for us to sign the resolution. That's, that's what I've heard.
Resolution is pretty broad.
Oh, yes, I agree with you. I agree with you. And that, many of the individuals have also been told that if they want to come and meet with any of us or meet with me, they have the ability to ask for that. And I've received no requests for any such meetings. So, yeah. So if we want to, for future meetings, make changes so that people have to specify a topic or that we want to highlight that we're most interested in what you have to say with regard to what the county, the work that the county does or the work that's under the control of the county, we can provide that. Not direction, but encouragement. That's the word I was looking for. That encouragement in the future, if we want.
I don't think I'm willing to do that. I kind of like the way it is.
When is election day?
Just two weeks from today.
Just pointing that out.
Okay, I think we're all set then on the formal agenda items. So board and leadership communication. Shall we do board communication first? Who would like to go first?
Well, I could do that because it's pretty short. So I did meet last week with the AMR leadership team and I appreciated them taking the time to come and we had a pretty candid conversation about expectations and and certainly improvements that have been made to the system and enhanced communication. So I, I was appreciative of them coming and meeting with me on that. I did meet with Chief Deputy Harold McCray Nix, as I usually do once a month. We talked about what would it take to open a pod? Another pod, how many staff would be in? So he has provided me, he's going to provide me with some information. I got, I just got it today, so I haven't had a chance to read it. But it was interesting to me to see how many vacant positions we have and how much we're struggling to fill those positions. So if we did this in one step time, how much would we have to fill to open another pod? So we could reduce the amount of forced releases that we have. That, that would be a priority to me. I have, we have
Is he supplying you with that?
Yes, and I, like I said, I just got it from ADE, just before this meeting. I will certainly share that with everybody. Actually, okay, we'll do that. Most important thing I did last week was when I was on vacation. So there we go. Got to have our priorities. Let's see, what else did I do? We have, I have a number of things coming up in the next couple of weeks before I go on vacation that are retreats. And so the timber meeting that was supposed to be on November 1 with the governor's staff has been postponed. And that's going to be again before I leave on the 15th, but that's coming to tractions. I've got the Santa Barbara Trail Intergovernmental Agency Retreat, followed by a Santa Barbara Trail Foundation Retreat, all of which is to work on who's going to have responsibility to raise the money and who's going to have responsibility to build the trail and maintain the trail. And so since STEA is basically an Oregon Parks Agency, it's, we have to be able to work with them and see if they'd be willing to take on that responsibility if we wanted them to. Remember, they also have the responsibility for the Banks-Fernonia Trail. And that is in need of some maintenance as well. They have plenty on their plate, and so we're going to be talking about that. I'm going to the Be In The Star event tomorrow, as I understand all of you are going. A couple of you are going then, and I'll be there at the 10 o'clock. I don't know what time you were planning on showing up. Be In The Star event.
Oh, yes, that's for us. It's a racist, I don't want to say that.
I know.
I got to get the R in there, okay?
I'll see you then.
Okay. And other than that, that's, we've got library work to do. Got a Salmonberry donor reception coming up Friday night, so lots of stuff going on.
I'll go next. I'm kind of ditto in a lot, in a lot of things. I, I too appreciate meeting with the AMR leadership. What I didn't understand going into that meeting, that I was meeting with AMR leadership and also PacWest Communication Team. So I, I just didn't understand that, but at the end of the meeting, I did. So, and it was, it was good information, direct communication, I did appreciate that. I'm, I'll be at the Be In The Star event. Tomorrow night is M-PAC. And again, we will be talking about the Garbage and Recycling System Facilities Plan, the Future Vision Work Plan, and the 2020 Planning and Development Grant. I also want my fellow commissioners to know that I did apply for the Future Vision, put my application for the Future Vision Advisory Committee. They extended the deadline from the 20th to 27th. So, but I did put my application after that. We'll see what happens. And I thought it was strange that the M-PAC packet had just the worksheet, nothing else on the Future Vision Work Plan.
That's why I didn't say much about it.
Well, while they have a deadline for the advisory committee, it's like, okay, so you're expecting people to apply just on their, I mean, I've been to the page where they described it.
I believe, Chair, that that may have been the reason that the extension for the application went to the 27th.
Well, also, there was nothing for any of you to come prepared to respond to. So luckily, it's the first step with the second step coming. But I certainly hope that their minds will remain open and that they're not going to adopt said work plan until M-PAC is actually had the opportunity to review it and weigh in.
It does feel a bit cart before the horse. I didn't realize that, the step that M-PAC was involved. And on Friday, I'm going to be attending the, with several other board members, the swearing in of circuit court judges. And so I'll be there Friday afternoon and Friday morning. We have a library.
I'll bitle some other stuff and then I'm focused on my time to just give you some updates on J-PAC. I think I talked about last time, the informational agenda items that was on them on the J-PAC agenda. But good news, I did cast our yay, not nae, yay, vote for the J-PAC priority. That was one action item on the agenda. And it was, of course, it was expected unanimous. So there is a regional J-PAC priority for 2025 transportation package. So that was done. I don't think I've ever looked back here, but last month or so, we, J-PAC agenda, one thing was added, which is to get a transit minute every J-PAC meeting. And in that one minute, Trimate comes and they give us a one-minute update, rapid updates on what's happening around Trimate. So this last month, they did an update, their transit one-minute update. For the month of August, there was 6.5 billion rides for the metro area. Five million.
What do you compare that to, though? What was it, pre-COVID?
So here it comes, so that's four.
Sorry.
That was 4% less, less than last year. So.
4% less than last year, which was post-COVID.
No, sorry, 4% more than last year.
Got it.
This, I'm sharing good news, so.
And how was it compared to August of 2019?
2019, thank you. This is good. And so what you're asking, Chair Harrington, is the pre-pandemic ridership. And it was 70%, we're reaching 70%. So pre-pandemic ridership then was 9.2 million. We're at 6.5. So we're, we're climbing. It's good news, it's good news. So we're heading in there. So the, the world, we're going back to pandemic. So the idea of new normal is.
There's a whole bunch of questions in there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only taken five years.
And we're still at 70%.
70%.
In employees.
Of pre-pandemic ridership, yeah. But it's a good, it's a good, people are going back and riding the transit. And then here's another good news that I thought might be worthy of knowing. So there was a, the Wella Transit Development in Wilsonville broke ground in September. And this is 120 affordable housing. But get this, I thought this was really fascinating. In the affordable housing, it will have a transit customer service on site with anonymity and everything. So I didn't realize that was happening in any of the affordable housing happening in Washington County. But this is, I would like to see.
Transit customer service, like tell you.
Yeah, the bus, yeah.
But Wilsonville smart.
Yeah. No, this is a Trimate. And yeah, so Wilsonville and. So anyways, I thought that was, I never, I haven't seen affordable housing where there was a customer service on site, transit customer service. But I will get clarification on. I think they said it was a Trimate, because there was a Trimate person giving up there. The other thing that's coming on, that was finalized was the RFA. The Chair of J-PAC gave an update on the Regional Flexible Fund. And the total project that was submitted, they metro received was 10 projects, 10 bond projects. And then one thing that was promised, and I did check in and will be sent to us. Will be, there was going to be a joint memorandum outlining the results. That memorandum hasn't been sent, but I'll send it to you as soon as it comes out. That, because, and the reason why I'm elevating that is J-PAC is expecting us to have a robust discussion in November so that our board needs to weigh in on that process. If we have a comment on that process. And that is my.
Great, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. I, sorry, I got back last night from a trip and I had mechanical, they had mechanical problems on the plane. So it was after 12, about 12:30 when I got home. And it picked up a terrible cold, which I hope not to sneeze too much at you. The, that's why I'm not there. Had a nice conversation with some folks from Ohio right before this meeting. They're predominantly interested in what intel will mean to their community as they locate in Ohio. I kind of walked through memory lane. I think there's many folks sitting around this table that I'm looking at who have been through those conversations. So it was pretty pedestrian in terms of just asking what it was like and what we went through. And everything from gain share to how we looked at it, going from a small population back in those days to a much larger population today. And so we'll see what they print. So anyway, that was interesting. Have, for those of you who don't know, WA is having a meeting on Thursday morning with both Representative Bonamichi and Salinas, kind of a perspective from DC. And so that ought to be interesting. Also, on, I have a HP 217, which is a Transit Advisory Committee on Friday morning. I was saddened to hear, like all of you, of Lois Ditmar's passing. For those of you who knew Lois, she certainly was a force in Washington County. Had a huge impact during her years in the past, where she was very involved in a number of things. So time marches on for all of us, and it was sad to see her, her leave us. Beyond that, the conference last week, I, I actually, you know how conferences go. You think you get a little free time. I think I had an hour and a half. I met with auditors multiple times, met with actuaries, met with the folks who are administering plans multiple times. I was a bit surprised, but we have a little bit of things to take care of. And found once again that the 451 organization that we have doesn't allow us to do some things we'd like to do, such as insurance of laterals. A lot of people from their property to the street would like to have some kind of insurance that would, you know, to call upon should they have any major breaks. And we can't quite get there with what we have today. So one more little problem that we have with the 451 structure we do. So anyway, that's it, and I'll give my remaining time up to whomever.
Just for clarification, I'd remember, or without, Roy, you were on Clean Water Services. And that conversation about 451 and everything relates to Clean Water Services, not to the campaign, correct?
That's it, thank you, Commissioner, that's absolutely true.
To put more clarity on it, he was at a conference for CWI. Which is an entirely different board.
Correct.
CWI is formed as a separate captive insurance corporation with a totally separate board. He serves because of his CPA and other fiduciary experience, not as a CWS board member. But CWI is in service to the CWS 451.
Thank you, both of you, for the clarifications. All of that is true. It's, it's an LLC formed in the state of Oregon. And that I've been wondering about taxes. We're finding out we're going to need to pay some taxes too. So I have a bit of expertise in that area. And so I was utilizing that, meeting on those issues as well. So you're correct, not part of Clean Water, but a part only because of its insurance and it's a separate board entirely. So thank you.
Thank you. And we'll see you at 6:30 for sure. My report out, two things that you may find of use. There was a briefing for some elected officials with Intel on their downsizing with Sam Johnson. And he spoke about their reductions of the 1,300 Oregon employees. There is a much more specific email article posted on Oregon Live and available in the Oregonian today, which gets into more specific positions than what he covered. But one of the key messages is that Intel remains committed to USA manufacturing and specifically to Oregon. And is, one of the reasons for this reduction in force is to continue to focus on their process technology leadership. And they're continuing to be committed to the Oregon Process Technology R and D strategy that they have here. In fact, they're upgrading D1 with new tools. And that announcement with the UV litho tool in April of this year is one example of that. And they will continue to expand the footprint of D1X based upon their self forecasting. So they're staying in Oregon, they're honoring their commitments. I did ask if they had any talking points with regard to the National Science Technology Center, which is the topic of the SB4 UGB expansion. And I prefaced my question, or my request for that observing that it's interesting to see how much confusion there is in our community over that SB4 conversation and too many assumptions that it is a expansion specifically for Intel, which is not. So the other thing I wanted to share is I had the opportunity of joining in a state legislative visit last Thursday with our Developmental Disabilities Department of Rep Sosa and Rep Neuron, where they're in attendance with staff from Senator Solman and Rep Pham's office. So it was good to hear more about the work of that department. And the department talked about, or one of the things they mentioned was our investment of ARPA dollars provided for an additional position for outreach from the department. And that yielded increased contacts for, for service, which means enrollment is up as a result, which has increased the case management load. But that outreach has also shown that having, for the assessments, having both language and cultural experience really does matter. The, the real ask for state legislators is to provide for full funding because the caseloads are, are too high. And the state isn't providing 100% of full funding. Pretty close, but still not 100%. So those were a couple of things that I thought were really useful for me to pass on. We have a letter, a draft letter for consideration. This is based upon our prior conversations regarding the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program and asking for state assistance towards the requirements. So you all have the letter. Are you thumbs up or looking for? Okay, great, great, we're all set on that then. Thank you to our team for drafting that up. I really appreciate it. Leadership communication, who would like to start off?
I will go. And as I am speaking, I would ask that Community Corrections Director Nate Garian and Assistant County Administrator Erin Calvert come to the table. So first, I'm going to talk about Facilities Fleet and Park Services. Last week, we had learned our pre, pre-application for a $20 million grant application to cover the Walnut Street seismic upgrades has been approved. While this isn't the grant, just getting to the pre-application being successful is the furthest that we've gotten in this process. So this is a huge success. And this is just, I want to highlight the staff for continuing to look at other sources of funding for our critical facility needs. As we continue to proceed, we'll update your board on this process. But this is a good step.
Good sign.
Yep. But it is a step. They, one of our emerging items that I didn't, wasn't able to give you a heads up on this this morning because I just learned about it about 1:30 this afternoon. And that's.
Hot off the press.
Hot off the press is why Director Garian is here. As you are aware, Director Garian is President of the Community Corrections Directors. And instead of me just reading from what Ms. Calvert had put together. And instead of me just reading from what Ms. Calvert had put together for me, I'm just going to actually turn over today who's the subject matter expert. The reason why this was important is this conversation will, our understanding will be raised at AOC potentially on Mondays. Wanted to bring this to you. And this is relative to Community Corrections.
Something more from OACC D?
Yes.
Look at that, finally talking.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair Harrington, thank you for having me here today. I, for the record, I'm Nate Gaurian. I'm the Director of Community Corrections. And I also want to give voice to Washington County in this process because in ledge days in September of two thousand twenty-three, House Judiciary Chair Rep Crop, he had convened this eleven forty-five work group that was supposed to look at the governance of Community Corrections statewide, as well as the Funding Formula statewide for Community Corrections and the KPIs or the Key Performance Indicators for Community Corrections. So governance, Funding Formula, and KPIs. Today, I'm talking about the governance aspect of this eleven forty-five group. So we have convened meetings for about a year. We're kind of coming to the end of our work for recommendations, moving into the long session for the legislature. And one thing that got brought up in terms of the governance is the ability for counties to contract back with Department of Corrections. So by way of context, I want to rewind back to the nineteen nineties when the state had full control of Community Corrections. So the eleven forty-five Senate bill was passed in the mid nineties, and that gave Community Corrections back to all of the individual counties. So we've been operating that way for a long time. The only time that hit, that opt-out has been triggered, and that's a very complex set of language within the eleven forty-five bill that I can, I'd be more than happy to go into if you have time. But in two thousand and six, it was, the legislature didn't fully fund Community Corrections, which triggered opt-out. It was the only time that it has been triggered. Lynn County and Douglas County were the only ones that took advantage of that opt-out. Those are the only two Department of Corrections, Rand Counties of the state of Oregon. Everybody else is independent with the
Which ones did it hear?
Lynn County.
Lynn.
Yep.
I know I didn't hear that right.
Douglas County.
Yep.
Yep. Those are the only two DOC Rand Counties. There are other counties that are operating like us in Washington County. There are some counties that have juvenile underneath them. There are some counties that have it under the sheriffs. So I think there's fourteen counties that have it under the sheriffs. So the question to you all is, do you want me to answer the survey as a Washington County representative to allow Department of Corrections to contract with individual counties? And I'll give you some additional framework before you advise me how to answer. So it had, the way the statutory language is written up and will likely be proposed is that the Board of County Commissioners would have the ultimate say whether or not to move forward with an option to contract with the Department of Corrections. So it has to originate with the Board of County Commissioners. And the Department of Corrections would have to agree to ratify that contract to go forward with taking over that individual county's Community Corrections. So that's what's before you today. I just need to know how to answer the question as it relates to Washington County. So I don't feel comfortable doing it as the, as the Director of Washington County to answer what I think is your authority.
So is, is this happening because the state is, because of the trigger part of not fully funding the actual cost study? Or is it coming up as a result of just the governance part of the eleven forty-five?
Yeah, just to keep it simple, it is from the eleven forty-five discussion. This is a concept that is not new. In fact, it was brought before the legislature in two thousand and thirteen. It never got legs, so it's getting additional focus right now with the eleven forty-five group. So that's part of the governance adjustment concept, if, if you will, for this eleven forty-five.
So the, the question, just to be clear, is that should, do we want to allow counties to to re-contract with the state and continue to have that decision be at the behest of the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Did I get both parts right?
Of any county. Yeah, I don't see it happening here under our current makeup. So I don't know that it applies to Washington County specifically right now, but it could in the future. So that's what you're, you'd be voting on, to allow any county within the state of Oregon to contract directly with the Department of Corrections with a similar model that Douglas and Lynn, Lynn County have right now.
Can I ask a couple of questions before we
Go ahead.
Ask or attempt to answer that question? What effect is it on counties like ours that have a full-fledged Community Corrections Department if more counties choose to essentially opt-out and contract with the state? Does it put, does it jeopardize our ability of seeking state funding? Or does it change the burden or something that would then have a direct or indirect ability for us to get full funding under the actual cost study business?
Just my experience working with Lynn Douglas Counties, they, it doesn't have much of an impact, you know, as it relates to our work. I could see later on, like if there was, for example, ten, fifteen Department of Corrections Rand Counties that could have a voice and really move the needle on votes for specifically OACC D or representation of, you know, any industry type of decision. Those, those people answer directly to, you know, authority of the governor. And if the governor has, you know, some marching orders, if you will, then those particular directors would likely vote in that way, right? So I, I think that would be the, maybe some of the influence indirectly moving forward. Right now, we share industry standards, best practices. We have a really good collaboration with the Department of Corrections. And I don't see that happening, you know, right now. So to answer your question, though, as it relates to Washington County, what the impact might be, I don't see much.
What about the impact smaller, is it more likely the smaller counties that will take advantage of this? And the cat, I mean, I'm thinking of like Jackson County had all the problems. I remember, I think it's Jackson, not Josephine.
You're correct, Jake.
Yeah.
I can't speak to the problems of the other counties, but I, I do know that it would start with the local control of the Board of County Commissioners. So if the Board of County Commissioners decides that they want to return the jurisdiction and authority to the Department of Corrections, they could start that conversation and make the decision from the, from the local level. So it, it really gives the authority and keeps the authority with the Board of County Commissioners without having to trigger an opt-out.
Just like it does with public health. Counties can opt out of having their own public health and have the state handle it. I don't know if there are any provisions with regard to population size within a county like on a year-by-year basis or biennium-by-biennium basis. It would be available to counties under a population of twenty thousand or lower. I don't know if there are any similar provisions. I'm comfortable with the local control aspect at this juncture. I think seeing how that goes may cause a consideration for within, from biennium to biennium because of purposes of planning for the state. They would need that or also looking at the population size of the state. But at this juncture, for local control, I don't, I don't see any reason, I haven't heard any reason why we would not support that at this juncture. But if you've got some, I'm all ears.
For you, the question here, to opt in or to opt out?
The question is just to make that to answer the survey, to allow the statutory change for the Department of Corrections to contract with counties. So just, I'll unpack it.
For more counties rather than Lynn County and Douglas County, there'll be more counties where
That would have the option. And I haven't heard of
Or Department of Corrections to operate
Yes.
rather than counties.
On county request. On county. So, so Commissioner Five, to be clear, this is just for Nate to answer a survey question.
Yeah.
And so this is just starting that
Yeah, I was trying to understand the governance breach on Department of Corrections. And I think if I'm understanding you correctly, they want to facilitate more Lynn Douglas County choices like that. Options for counties to have.
That's correct. The, the counties currently, under the, the current law, have the ability to contract with another county right now. They also have the ability to contract with a private entity, which nobody has done that. But statutorily, they are able to do that. So this would just expand options for a Board of County Commissioners to say, okay, if a neighboring county or another county wasn't an option for them or they didn't want to take it on, they could ask for the Department of Corrections to take it on. So it's just, in my, from my lens, it's providing the counties an additional option.
And just to move off from your knowledge and expertise here, since you're here, the mic, is, do you think that is a, a real deficit that exists? And would it create a positive impact for other counties besides Washington?
Yeah, so I, I've unpacked this with a little bit of research. And I took a look at the KPIs, the stability factors that the DOC Rand Counties have versus the Sheriff Rand Counties versus the independent Rand Counties. And there's very little difference if you take a look at employment as, as well as treatment, engagement, as well as recidivism. And I could tell you a few more KPIs, but there's very little difference as it relates to the DOC Rand Counties versus other Rand Counties. So they do a good job. And I think that's because we have a really good communication style with DOC. We have a really good relationship with them. And all of the county directors meet together monthly and wrestle with best practices. We formulate recommendations on how to move forward with evidence-based practices. And there's a lot of consistency statewide. We could do better, but there is some level of consistency there.
I think my experience in participating at AOC has been, one big thing I've learned is that every county is so different and they have different needs. And if this allows other counties to operate successfully, I think that's important. Commissioner Rogers?
I, pardon, pardon me. Yeah, I see it as having options to look at various variables. So I'm all in favor of, of allowing our staff that, that flexibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that was plenty. Thank you for indulging the extra time and allowing us to bring this last minute item forward.
Thanks for covering it and being so diligent about it.
Well said.
Courtney, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I'll try and be brief to get us, give us back some time. I did, this was previously communicated to your board, but I did want to raise up our ongoing efforts to clean up the Cellar Road property, nuisance property. Our most recent efforts, which truly have been a one-Washington County approach in partnership with our office and LUT, the Sheriff's Office, and Solid Waste and Recycling. We have now entered into an MOU with DEQ that allows us to access one point five million dollars of superfund site, money funds, which we think will be enough to clean up the rest of the property based on what we know. You'll remember that we did already do approximately, took out about a hundred tons of waste and have filed a lien against the property to try to recover our costs of just under three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the future when, when that's appropriate. So just wanted to raise up that continued good work that is good for the property and good for the community. Yeah.
Would you remind me, does Spencer have access to the property?
No.
I mean, we're in that situation where we clean up and it would just come back.
Yeah, he's, he's not permitted on the property. And all we're part, reports are is that he's staying off the property. Finally, I just wanted to let you know that I did have the pleasure last night to spend some time with our CCI and CPO leaders. I did some public meetings training with them. And as you remember, that is part of our ongoing efforts to modernize the program. And will be part of the continuing work we staff brings before you as we look at that updating that R and O. They had real, they were very engaged and had really good questions. So we're excited to continue this journey with them. That's it for me.
Other question. This is like a remind me kind of a thing. And I'm happy if you could direct me somewhere to book this information. I was able to attend one CPO online recently, CPO six meets in person often the time, but CPO three. And the chat function isn't accessible. This is an opportunity for residents to exchange, like here's a link. Or I think multiple, in this particular meeting, multiple residents were actually interested in the board's agenda and how to access it and where they can find that information. Where is the procedure or the rule that dictates chats off? Because I'm part of boards that do have to chat function open and accessible to everyone. But CPOs don't have that right now. So you could direct me, because I think of this, we need to come back and have a robust board discussion. Because I think it's something that works that we should reconsider.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have that conversation with you, Commissioner Five. And that is one of the questions that came up. And we're continuing to problem solve with them in ways that kind of comply with best practices for public meetings. So to share that information, but not use the chat function. So I'd be happy to have that conversation with you.
Elizabeth Edwards, Clean Water Services.
All right. On behalf of Clean Water Services, just a brief announcement, we are looking forward to board learning with you all next Friday, November first. You should be receiving your packets by the end of the week. And we have a lot to cover that, including a status update on classification and compensation, a discussion around board travel and education, a showcase and laboratory tour from our research and innovation team, a discussion on rainfall, flooding and stormwater. There's a very interesting article in the Washington Post today around flooding, an update on renewable natural gas, closing with executive sessions. We're, we're packing a lot in, but we will make sure you have a great day. And yeah, more to come. We will be at Durham.
Are we having cold lunch or a hot lunch?
I think it's a hot lunch. Soup, soup and salad.
Priorities.
Soup and salad, hot and cold. Yeah.
Priorities for me.
Okay, so next we have a fifteen-minute break. And then we have two different executive sessions after that. So how about if we have the motion to adjourn to our first executive session before we break so we can just go right into it at three forty-five? So move, wait, wait. Motion to adjourn to executive session at three forty-five pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero sub two sub H for the purposes of discussing potential litigation. So move. And I second that. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Okay, we are hereby on break till three forty-five. Thank you.